This is the first Tuesday in the month of Wapaka City Council meeting.
Good evening, I'd like to call this regular council meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Council President Paul Mayo will be sitting in for the mayor who is out of town. I'd like to also inform everybody that I will be a voting member of this body tonight. As always, we'll start out with a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Sandy, would you give the opening statement, please?
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thank you Sandy, would you take roll, please?
Steve Hackett?
Here.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Alan Keeland?
Here.
Scott Pritchardsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Chuck Whitman?
Here.
Mary Fair?
Here.
And Eric Olson?
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda. Unless somebody has an item on the consent agenda, they'd like to move to the regular agenda for consideration and discussion. If not, I'd need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Keeland, second by Hackett, that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Motion carries. Next, we have the regular agenda. I think we have one handout, Sandy.
Under number nine, new business letter A, the last page of the Assistant Library Director IT Coordinator Job Description was distributed.
Thank you. Alright. With that addition, I'd need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved by Chestnut, second by Olson, to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Motion carries. Item seven, non-agenda items and announcements. First is a presentation of a certificate of appreciation to Brett Rodens for ten years' service to the city, which I have right here. Chief, Brett is not here, as I understand. Would you like to give this to him?
Sure. He is actually, Officer Rodens is actually with Chef with the Cop tonight, so he's been a part of that organization since the very beginning and helped Cameron Durant in the very beginning. So, I will bring this back to him and let him know how much this he appreciates and his service.
Next, we have, this is informational, a letter from EAA Chapter 444, a thank you letter and a donation of $500 to the Wapaka Municipal Airport. It's informational only. Next, we have Wisconsin DNR review of the wastewater treatment plant. This is something Justin will handle.
Yes, thank you, old man Mayo. Page forty-five through fifty is basically our report from Wisconsin DNR that came and visited our treatment plant in the middle of summer of June there, and the reason for the visit was our, I guess, our ex-DNR representative on the sewer side retired, he's retired now, but basically visited, showed the plant to the new guy, and from that came basically an inspection report and also some very good comments that I'd just like to point out about our staff. Mark Corbett, who is the retired engineer, has spoken pretty highly about Jeff and the crew a number of times in the past, and then here it's just documented, so I'd just like to point that out to the city and also the council. So, page forty-five through fifty, if you'd like to look at those yourself.
Okay, thanks, Justin. The next item is Wapaka County Economic Development Corporation presentation by Dave Teal, who is the executive director. Dave, you're up.
Thank you, good evening. I don't have a presentation, so what I did do is gave you some handouts previously that I think Henry distributed to you. I mean, you get a report as you had in your packet tonight, which pretty much outlines my activities monthly, as well as the topics that I'm interested in engaging people in discussion with usually, or stuff that's going on inside the county. This cost-benefit analysis is really a kind of a summary piece for you that shows what you've invested in the organization since I've been the executive director, and then kind of the benefits, and highlighted the City of Wapaka stuff for you to give you an idea of what you're getting out of your investment. So, is there any questions regarding that information? Or comments?
Nothing. Okay.
The only other piece then I did give you was something that is a project that really is probably going to be the project for some time at least, certainly for the amount of time that I'm going to be in this job for over the next couple of years. And, so just, you know, I've talked about this many times, but just a heads up, we're in a huge demographic situation here where we don't have enough people, and we're not going to for a while. And, so we need to try to preserve our economy to the best of our ability, and one of the key things there is to engage our school districts, engage our young people in our economy the best we can. So, this is just an example of something that we're really starting to work on. Terry Schultz from the Chamber is a huge part of this, Henry's involved, obviously. So, just a heads up on, we're gonna keep working on this stuff, and I know that, you know, I was at the meetings last year that the school and the district put on, and so, you know, we've reached out to them and they're fully engaged in this, and we're gonna try to do everything we possibly can creatively to try to keep our young people around, at least get them to understand what's here and how they can plug into it at some point in their lives, so that's what that one's all about.
Okay. Any questions for Dave on that?
I would like to ask just one question.
Sure.
Is the school district getting a copy of your newsletter every week, or every month, like we do?
I don't believe so, no.
Could you put them on that? I think it's, the information coming out of there, the school district should be reading.
Okay.
We know, I can forward, forward it.
Okay.
Just make it a point to, I'll just probably just send it to the superintendent, is that okay?
Thank you.
And then ask him to give it to his staff?
I do try to get in the newspapers, they don't always print it, but sometimes they do. But, yeah, that's a great idea. I'll try to get that around to the other superintendents too, now that I've built relationships with all of them, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Thanks Dave, appreciate it. Next, we have public input. This is input from the public or council members on a non-agenda item. If you have any public input, please step to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Yes?
My name is Kari Esbenson, and I live at 124 East Lake Street, and I just wanted to, this is kind of impromptu, I just wanted to thank the members of the Public Works Department for all of their excellent work on Lake Street this fall. I know they were under somewhat of a pinch with the weather in getting that road project accomplished, but they did an excellent job out there. I know there were also contractors working on behalf of the city, and they did a great job too. Some of us that have had kids in that neighborhood, and now elders in the neighborhood have worried a little bit about this speed limit on the street, and had hoped maybe we could have speed bumps, but we understand because it's an ambulance route, that wasn't feasible. But, I wanted to just say that the sign, the digital speed sign that is out there right now, I think is really working, and I hope that can become a permanent fixture, actually, in the neighborhood to keep the traffic moving a little slower. And I think sometimes, myself included, sometimes you, you know, you're in a hurry to get some place, you space out, whatever, you don't always, you're not always aware that you're going faster than you, you know, you should be, and I think it's a good kind of subtle reminder for people to slow down, that there are kids and people in the neighborhoods. And I think it's really important to keep, you know, our historic, old neighborhoods, vital places that people want to live in, so that not everybody's moving out into the surrounding towns, and keeping the quality of life and keeping the neighborhood safe is important. So, anyway, so thank you to everybody who did a great job this summer, so.
Thanks, Kari. Anybody else? Please step forward.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jane Dooley, and I live at 1127 Riverside. I just moved here to Wapaka. I've lived in Milwaukee all my life, and here I am in a brand-new town. And I am here tonight to express my concerns, and I have a question about the lack of streetlights here in this city. I see some people responding to that. It might be an issue that is on other people's minds. You mentioned safety. I'm certainly concerned with safety. I've lived, as I said, in Milwaukee, a larger metropolis, a quote-unquote "more dangerous" city as perceived than Wapaka. I have learned that Wapaka may be in the top ten of the most dangerous cities in the state of Wisconsin. I can't quote that resource, I'm not exactly sure if it's accurate, but my question is, and I also read in the County Post, that back in February, streetlights were removed from the city, ninety-two, I guess, at the cost of thirty-three cents per resident. And I will tell you that I'm frustrated, and I feel, as a new resident, unsafe here and unwelcome, because people are not out on the streets walking, they're not checking in with their neighbors. I've been out walking since I've been here, I'm always the only one out on the street, and I don't feel safe. Cars drive up next to me, and again, hearing that Wapaka is an unsafe and dangerous place to live. Again, my impressions here, as a new resident, I felt it was important for me to come tonight to express myself. Hopefully, you do take that into consideration, because I am one of many who will come to Wapaka, and at this point in time, I wonder why I did. And, so I just wanted to give you my impression, and if you're able to answer my questions about the crime rate, as well as if you were, did you seek public input when you made that decision to reduce the number of streetlights? And have you taken into consideration the increased crime? So, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to continue to stand here, if you answer questions.
We're not answering questions, this is just public input.
Okay, so, at this point...
Jane, what's your phone number?
My phone number?
Yeah.
I have a, my cellphone.
Okay, or you can call the clerk's office tomorrow, and we can get you in contact with the correct people.
Okay. Who should I ask, who should I ask for, sir?
Henry.
Henry Belacker. Will do.
We'll get you in contact with the correct people.
Okay, thank you for hearing my concern.
Thank you for expressing. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Hannah Bukavich, and I reside at 117 East Fulton Street. Good morning, I mean, not good morning, good evening, members of the Wapaka Common Council. My name is Hannah Bukavich. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you again this evening. As a concerned resident who has personally experienced the negative consequences of what can happen when problematic behaviors by people working on behalf of the city are allowed to persist without consequences, I am happy to hear that a new system for personnel performance review has finally been adopted for employees of the city. I am happy because I want to see the city where I reside thrive, and the excellent employees who work on behalf of members of the community flourish in a nourishing work environment that encourages and supports optimal work, performance, and success. Performance review, of course, is only as good as a degree of implementation and follow-through, and tonight I am here to represent members of the community who are circulating the following petition as a positive step going forward. I would like to read that petition to you now, in hopes that one day you will sign and embrace it. High moral and ethical standards among municipal public officials, staff, and contractors are essential to the effective governance of our community. In order to maintain the confidence of the people and the leadership of their community, we the undersigned are petitioning the common council of the City of Wapaka, Wapaka County, Wisconsin, to call for greater accountability of all persons employed or acting on behalf of the city and its residents in abiding by the highest of ethical standards, practice of transparency, and laws of the state. It is imperative that an active and fair process of personnel evaluation be maintained that annually reviews job performance and recognizes outstanding employee achievement. Likewise, said process shall include a mechanism for citizens, staff, or officials to articulate concerns in the event of poor employee conduct that jeopardizes integrity, healthy functioning, and quality of life of the city and its taxpaying residents. In cases where verifiable evidence of poor conduct by any employee, department head, or contractor working on behalf of the municipality is presented, members of the common council, along with supervisory staff, shall take such matters seriously and address them immediately with full investigative review, followed by termination where laws of the state or civil codes of conduct have been willfully and repeatedly violated. In instances where an elected official may be involved, the common council shall take responsible, reasonable actions to notify the council member of their concerns and ask for their voluntary resignation. Efforts to address lesser but equally destructive repetitive behaviors on the part of staff shall include probation and monitoring of employee conduct with serial repeat offenses grounds for termination. It should be understood that retention of employees, contractors, or municipal officials who fail to meet the highest of ethical and behavioral standards in the conduct of their work violates the trust of their citizens and squanders the economic and human capital of the community. We, the citizens, expect and look to our common council employees, especially those in supervisory capacities and contractors, to demonstrate the highest of leadership traits in the dispatch of their duties in order to optimize our community's full potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Anybody else?
Good evening, city council members. My name is Sophia Bukavich. I reside at 124 East Lake Street, Wapaka, and thank you for allowing me to speak before you again tonight. Tonight, my family and I would like to present an award to recognize excellence. As many of you know, the story of the Wizard of Oz has many symbolic meanings for our family and for the world, and its messages of courage, love, friendship, and sacrifice for things greater than oneself. Tonight, we would like to recognize several former employees of the City of Wapaka who, in their service above self and commitment to the citizens of this community, went above and beyond the call of duty. These individuals, whose names shall remain anonymous at personal request, demonstrated great leadership during a dark time in our community's history. Seeing that certain things were not right, they took it upon themselves to pay attention to details and to alert the necessary authorities of employee theft that drained valuable financial resources from city programs over many years. These people are unsung heroes, who suffered from months and years of stress during and in the aftermath of this event. Some lost jobs, they loved and faced criticism from colleagues. Tonight, we want to thank them for their bravery and extend a sincere note of apology for all they endured and the ways that they have made our community a better place to live. We hope you will join us in signing this award. So, this award is entitled the Dorothy Award, and it is in honor of past Wapaka city staff members who exhibited courage, heart, and excellence and sacrifice in the service of, to the citizens of our community.
Thank you.
One more. My name's Russ Butkowitz, I live at 124 East Lake Street. Members of city council, as a resident of the city who is familiar with the events surrounding the Oz property, I would like to request that the city investigate the possibility of pursuing a claim against First American Title, given their apparent lack of due diligence in the production of the title insurance for this property. Their failure to list the donor's restrictive covenants on the property has cost the city and city staff considerable time and effort, and there are likely future costs to meet the DNR's requirements for conversion to a different property. Such a claim may help to defray some of these costs, and would therefore be a benefit to the city and its citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, Russ. Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your comments, everybody. Item eight, unfinished business. The only item there is ordinance number 0417, an ordinance detaching territory from the City of Wapaka. This is a first reading. Attorney Hart, would you like to summarize this for us, please?
This ordinance is brought before the council by virtue of a petition that was filed by Russell Butkowitz and Kari Esbenson to detach a 13.035 acre of property. The petitioners complied with the necessary law in that they had published a notice of intent to file a petition and published the same in the Wapaka County Post. Within 120 days of the publication of that notice, they did file with the clerk's office a petition to detach 13.05 acres that they own. It is necessary for the council to act on that petition within 60 days of the date of the petition, which was November 2nd. We're here this evening to act on the petition, on the ordinance which I have drafted, which basically is an ordinance for detachment of the parcel requested by Mr. Butkowitz and Ms. Esbenson. That consists of the property that they own. This matter was discussed by the council back in, I believe, in August or early September. There was consensus that the council would be in favor of passage of this ordinance. This ordinance is the first reading, however, I would request, given that this matter has been discussed at length by council, that this, the council waive the first reading this evening and act on this ordinance accordingly. This ordinance would then, upon its approval, would only be published and become an ordinance provided that the town of Wapaka would accept this detachment, and that is another step that the petitioners would have to go through to present a request for acceptance of this territory into the town of Wapaka, and that is yet to be determined. Any questions?
Assuming adoption, is there formal action that the clerk's office has to do to notify the town of Wapaka, or the petitioners do that?
I could, I could do that, I could notify the town, and they would have to get that on their agenda then to have an ordinance that would accept it, right.
I talked to the mayor this morning about this, and he is, he told me that he thought it was a possibility that waiving of the first reading would be requested. He personally is not in favor of that. He thinks it should go to, to the next meeting, wait two weeks and go to the next meeting, so he's not in favor of that, so, just so you all know.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 05-17.
I'll second.
Are you, are you making a motion to waive the first reading?
That comes second, doesn't it?
Nope.
Okay. I'll reverse that, then I'll make the motion to waive the second reading and to approve the ordinance 05-17.
The first reading?
To waive the first reading?
First reading.
Second.
Okay, moved by Keeland, second by Hackett, to waive the first reading of ordinance number 0517. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do. First of all, I agree with the mayor, there's no compelling reason to waive the first reading of this and essentially deny the citizens of the, of the City of Wapaka their time to weigh in on this. There's no urgency to this that I see, and typically, whenever we waive a first reading, there needs to be some valid reason for it.
Anybody else?
My sense is this has dragged out so long that...
When have we had, when have we had a detachment petition for this before? This is, this is, this is a new thing, so I don't know how you can say it's dragged out. This is a brand-new, separate issue to returning the property for the Oz property.
The history behind all of this has dragged on for a long time, Paul. You're right, yeah, the detachment is a new issue, but we have discussed it in the past. We knew it was coming.
True.
Would we say that the citizens of Wapaka also know that this was coming?
Would I say that?
I mean, that's, I think that's what's in question.
There's been publication in the Post.
There's been much publication about it. It, my opinion is that it is, it's very, people that are interested in the issue are very aware of the fact that the city is in discussion about detaching the property, and have been for a long time.
Just a minute now, just so there's no confusion, this is not the Oz property. Understand that. This is not the Oz property. This is the property that is contiguous to the Oz property owned by Mr. Butkowitz and Ms. Esbenson.
Right.
It is their intention, as I understand it, and in accordance with a letter that was provided to Henry when this petition was presented, that at a later date they would accept a deed from the, provided that this property was attached to the town, they would accept a deed from the city, and then go through this process to have the Oz property. That's the second step. This is just something that has to do with that Oz property, it's their own property. I will say this, that there is no sense of urgency, it would be timely to act on it. Next month, we would not be beyond the 60 days that is required for enactment of this order.
Does everybody understand that? That this is, there's two pieces of property on your map, and this is parcel A? Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, alright, I'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no?
No.
Three. Raise your hand if said.
I request a roll call vote, please.
Dave Peterson? Steve Hackett? Chuck Whitman?
No.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
No.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
No.
Scott Pritchardsky?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Seven ayes, three noes, motion carried.
Okay, first reading is waived. So, with that, we would be looking for a motion to approve ordinance number 0517.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Hackett, second by Keeland, that council approves ordinance 0517, an ordinance detaching territory from the City of Wapaka. Any discussion?
I have questions. In the 20-plus years that I've been on this council, I've seen very few detachments, and there's always been a good and valid reason for these detachments, either neutral or beneficial to the city. So, I was wondering if any of my fellow aldermen would be able to tell me what, what is the benefit, or what, why, why are we doing this?
I think we're doing this at the request of constituents. The owners of the property want to detach, and...
That's the only, the only particular reason that we're, we're doing this.
Yeah, I think that's the main one. If there's another one, I don't know what it is.
There is an underlying reason for this, I believe. This property, along with the Oz property, is currently zoned as heavy industry. There is a problem that has to do with the barberry that is encroaching on this property. There is a problem that has to do with the barberry that is encroaching on this property. And to resolve the barberry problem, which is important to the owners and to the preservation of the Oz property, there's a lot of ways of moving the barberry so that it doesn't become invasive. And one of the, one of the ways that is the most recommended is to use the goat, some goats to go in and eat on the property and they will ultimately destroy the barberry. Because this property cannot be rezoned to a zoning or agriculture because the, the city will not allow more ag property to be zoned that way in the city. It's necessary for them to get into the town, have the property rezoned from heavy industry. And then they would be able to implement the goats to resolve the barberry that's on the property at this point. It would also give them the luxury of treating this property as egg, egg property rather than heavy industry property and developing it in accordance with what their wishes have been for the past several years. I think that's the main reason.
That's...
Because it can't be rezoned in the city and that barberry is going to be there and it's going to get worse and worse and worse. I believe that's a lot of their concern.
Thank you for that. I really appreciate that.
Any more discussion? Voice vote.
Roll call.
Okay.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Item nine is new business. First up is Assistant Library Director IT Coordinator Job Description, which Peg is going to handle for us.
Thank you. First of all, I want to apologize to council members that I did not have that job description the way it should have been formatted. When the job descriptions were created, they were created by a consultant. And the program in Word is a little glitchy. And actually, some of the important content was removed from that when I created a PDF for the council. And then, when I thought I had it fixed and sent it on to Sandy, I look at it now and realize that the, the last page is missing pieces as well. So, with your permission, I'd like to table this until next time.
Everybody okay, okay with that? Okay, good. All right, Peg. Next is Resolution Number 1398. A resolution authorizing the termination of tax incremental financing district number seven. Kathy?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, council members. And my, my item in the packet is on page 62, like is outlined, is that during the 2018 budget process, we were reviewing all of the TIF districts and it was staff's recommendation to close and terminate TIF number seven, the Ware Street-Gusmer project. The final debt payment was made this year and there are no other project expenses to be spent from this TIF. There will be one more increment of $95,881 on this next tax bill. But that would be added to the amount that would be distributed once the final expenses are paid for the audit and the closure out of this district. So the city's portion is approximately $59,000. That would be distributed back once we close this head. I just need the resolution to start the process with the DOR so that there is no increment in 2019. Questions?
With the closing of this TIF, well, if we wanted to establish a TIF in another area, that would allow us to do it?
I don't believe so, it's not enough.
Yeah, we're still TIFed out right now. We're, we exceed our maximum. We'll need to close a couple more TIFs before we could even consider that, which would be 2020, 2021, I believe, at the earliest.
I must admit, I've never heard the word "TIFed out" before, so...
We are. We have to be at 12% and we are at 16%, so it's going to be a while.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Question.
Discussion, comments? Okay, I'll be looking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 1398.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Fair, second by Peterson, that we approve Resolution Number 1398, a resolution author, authorizing the termination of tax incremental financing district number seven. It's a roll call vote.
Scott Pritchardsky?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
And Mary Fair?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Next item is the appointment of the election inspectors for the term of 2018 and 2019. We have a long list in our packet of, I don't know how many people, 30, 40 people. We're not going to read them all, but there is an addition. Colin McNamara is in addition to the list that you have. So if you agree with the selection, I entertain a motion to approve it.
Second.
Moved by Hackett, second by Chestnut, that council approves the appointment of election inspectors for the term of 2018 and 2019. It's a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Should I, should, since my wife is on this list, should I abstain?
I don't know.
Good answer.
If you want, I guess.
Just wanted, just wanted an opinion.
All right. You didn't get one. Okay, any more discussion or questions? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item D is Evan Street Reconstruction Project. And it is going to be Resolution, in a form of Resolution Number 1396, a resolution authorizing the submission of a Wisconsin Department of Transportation 2018, 2019 Local Road Improvement Program, application for Evan Street and reconstruction of Berlin Street and Churchill Street, which Justin is here to explain.
Yes, thank you, Paul. We're actually going to do a short presentation. Andrew Dane here is with me from SEH regarding what we've been working on as far as Evan Streets. So we're giving, giving you quite a bit of information, but in all regards to these resolutions, what we want to do with this outside funding source. So Andrew's going to start it and then I'll, I'll wrap up the presentation, so...
Okay. Thank you, Justin. Please save all your tough questions for the end when Justin comes back up here. So, my name is Andrew Dane, I'm a urban planner with SEH and have been assisting the city with holding, putting together some alternatives for Evan Street, holding a public meeting and then preparing two grant funding applications. Tonight, our real purpose here in the next five or 10 minutes is to summarize the alternatives that we've put together so, so far. Talk a little bit about the public input we received in October and then discuss next steps. Shoot this backwards maybe. Okay. Choking up? There we go. Okay, so as most, everyone here is probably aware of Evan Street's over here between Berlin and Churchill, south side of town, just off the state highway. It's a, it's an interesting location in the city. The study area, this next map was an exhibit that Justin had put together, which I think is, really calls out some interesting land uses in and around this area and kind of is good, I think, to kind of think big picture when you're thinking about this project and ultimately what option you choose for the, for the road. You've got a lot of churches, schools, recreational areas, hospitals, senior living, lots of different types of land use on this side of town. And it's, this section of street here on Evans is really important link, I think, that ties together a lot of neighborhood assets and creates a good quality of life for the residents that live there now and in the future. We had a, through this process, we developed some alternatives in consultation with city staff and we held a public meeting on October 17th where we presented those alternatives, discussed the pros and cons of each of the alternatives, had some open discussion, really good discussion with approximately 20, 25 folks that were in attendance around some of their concerns and then did a little Q and A session with Henry and Justin. We presented four alternatives that really range from option number one, which is really more of a rural paved shoulder option, very similar to what's out there now with some bike, a paved shoulder that would allow for some bike accommodation, all the way to option four on the other end of the spectrum, which is full urban sidewalk, something more typical you'd see in the rest of your close-in neighborhoods in the city. So I'll walk through each of those four options. First option's the rural paved shoulder, 36-foot total width. This is really the least disruptive option, probably the least costly. If you were just paying for this for yourselves and not relying on some other grant fundings, it may be, in fact, be the least costly. It does provide some on-street accommodation for bicycles and people that would want to walk along the shoulder, similar to what they do currently. So we've got the, on either side of these 12-foot travel lanes, we've got a four-foot bike lane and a two-foot shoulder. The next option here is, provides the on-street biking accommodation as well as an off-street sidewalk. Could be on the north side or the south side of the street. It would be a typical five-foot wide sidewalk. There'd be a little terrace, which would serve as a buffer before you get into that road section and then that five-foot bike lane, two 11-foot travel lanes in this case and a five-foot shoulder. So similar to adjacent neighborhoods, moderate cost. Option number three is pretty similar to option number two, but here we substituted that bike, the, the, excuse me, the sidewalk for a side, what we call a side path, which is essentially a trail, a multimodal trail that would accommodate both bicycles and pedestrians. And so we've added this, what we call a side path on one side of the street instead of the sidewalk. And this is also moderate cost. And then finally, the most sort of urban of the options, which would be the higher cost, this would be what you'd find in, again, most of your downtown neighborhoods here, sidewalks on both sides, bike lanes on the street. And with the extra sidewalk, it would come in as a little more costly option for you. We, just a few highlights from the meeting we held in October. The thing that jumped out to me the most, there were probably two things that jumped out to me the most. One was the safety. We had several people get up and offer little testimonials of nearly being hit by... So it was very powerful to hear people talk about themselves and, and their kids nearly getting hit on the road and shared some specific concerns regarding, regarding safety due to the condition of the road and the, and the alignment and the lack of sidewalks or bike lanes. So that was clearly a concern, I think, with a number of folks attending the meeting. When we, we also, the other thing that stuck out to me was that residents want to, and obviously, like most of us, we want, we want our cake and we want to eat it, our cookie too. We want to be able to, they're concerned about the cost and in particular, the special assessments that might be associated with a project like this if you're adding a sidewalk. So there was several folks that, you know, wanted to, more information, more details and had some concern regarding special assessments. We asked people to vote and not everybody did, but the folks that did come up to the front of the room and vote, the first option, option one, which was that most, the least invasive option, received nine votes. And then between options, option two received three and a half votes. Option three received four and a half votes. There was one person that couldn't decide between two and three. So we said, "Go ahead, split your vote." So our takeaway from this was really that we were evenly split between folks that wanted some sort of dedicated sidewalk and folks that wanted it left, kind of as-is, with, with some bike lanes, with some striping on the streets. And talking to, talking further with city staff, reviewing some of your previous policy documentation that Justin provided from 2003 and 2011, city had some ad hoc policy sidewalk committee put together in reviewing some of those policies and taking into consideration the safety concerns of the neighborhood, looking at how we sort of approve upon the existing facilities out there in a logical kind of incremental manner and then looking at costs. Our recommendation was option number two, which is this half-rural, half-urban sidewalk option. Again, we'd have the sidewalk on one side only, the two on-street bike lanes or bike paved shoulders, 11-foot travel lanes. An option like this would give you some flexibility in the future to add sidewalk on the other end, other side, if you ever did decide to go in that direction. I mean, it seemed to be a good balance of various viewpoints and considerations that we've heard so far. So at this point, I'm going to turn over to Justin.
Thanks, Andrew. So, so SEH is in the progress of helping us submit, excuse me, for these, for two funding applications, which are the items that are in the agenda for you to, to vote on and get action on. Those can be seen, I believe, on page 65 and 66. But of the two funding sources, the first one is the Local Roads Improvement Program, or better known as LRIP. This program would essentially cover about 50% of the total project cost. Now, it's a very good fund, so it'd be something that we would need to secure in order to accomplish what we want for one of these improvements, these sections that we're including for additional pavement, pedestrians and sidewalk. The other funding source is the Transportation Alternatives Program, or better known as TAP. And that would cover 80% of the pedestrian and bicycle facility. So that would only cover, if we put in sidewalk or the bike lanes, 80% of that cost. So kind of reiterating what Andrew has mentioned, considering the results that we've seen from the public meeting, the ad hoc committee recommendations from the past and budgetary constraints, we're, we're recommending, along with SEH's recommendation, to pursue option two. So our application would be filled out with the understanding that upon we get this, we're going to go, we're going to shoot for this option two. So everything in this application will be geared towards expected cost, all the kind of geometrics and what we'd expect to, to happen with design and construction. So right now, Evan Street is currently in our capital planning for a 2018 design and a 2019 construction, so right around the corner. So these funding sources would influence that timeline. The LRIP, which could be awarded as early as this, coming April, April of 2018, would allow us to meet that schedule to design it in 18 and construct it in 2019. The TAP funding is a little different animal. It's much like the STP program out here in Main Street. We, we put in the hopper and at the earliest, maybe 2020, maybe as far out as 2021. So we would have to shift around the capital planning if we were to receive that funding. But however, in order, what we feel though, in order to make these improvements and make Evan Street this connection with, with bike and peda combinations, we're going to need some of this outside funding. So that's why we're seeking it and we're going after it. So currently, Evan Street estimate is about $1 million, depending on which one you look at. you look at, but we're looking at these, these bigger, higher-end improvements to get this, it's gonna be about a million dollars. So, that includes design, a contingency cost, storm sewer improvements, sidewalk, bike accommodations, and also includes a rough estimate on an intersection improvement of Churchill and Evan Street over there by the Crystal Lounge. The geometrics of that intersection, it's just kind of a slightly unsafe, next to the building, we need to make some improvements there. Now, what those are, the details of that have not been ironed out, but we'll, we'll eventually get to there, but that sort of cost is in there as well. So, that's driving up the cost of doing some major improvements there as well. So, at this point, what we're looking at is funding is primarily through our capital borrow plan. In our, in our borrow, borrow plan, we have about, I believe, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars earmarked in the plan, so within our, our borrow, and then also with the assessments, our ordinance show, or requires that first time a sidewalk goes in, it gets assessed to adjacent property owner a hundred percent. So, we'd use those two funding mechanisms to work this pro, or project. And, and then, of course, with the T A P or the L R I P funding, if we're able to acquire those, well, that would just take much of the burden away as far as cost. So, we're certainly gonna have a pretty good cost, or a pretty big project here on Evan Street. It's just over a half a mile, we gotta redo the whole entire thing, so just redoing the pavement is gonna be fairly costly, so we're looking for these outside sources. Probably the last thing to mention, so the L R I P covers about fifty percent, so we get that, we would only be able to assess fifty percent, not that we could double-dip. Same thing with the T A P grant, eighty percent would be covered, we could only then assess twenty percent. So, I mean, we wanna get this funding source for, you know, our, for the city, but it's also gonna help the local residents there as well. So, so what we got in the packet on page sixty-five and sixty-six are the two resolutions to seek these funding sources. And much like a lot of these other ones that we've dealt with in the past, there's no obligation. We're gonna seek them. If we get award, awarded the funding, get cold feet, we can always withdraw. So, basically, we get awarded, we'll need to accept it at some point, and certainly you'll be notified upon award if we get that far. One thing I'd like to point out is Resolution number thirteen ninety-seven. Alderman Keeland notified us that there was a typo underneath the fourth, whereas it says, Wisconsin Department of Transportation Local Road Improvement T A P Program. Well, that should be Transportation Alternatives Program. So, that has already been fixed in the minutes and we'll make sure that we get the right wording for signatures. So, with, I'll open it up to questions or discussion, and, Scott?
With assessing the sidewalks, now you're talking about sidewalks only on one side of the road, so am I seeing an unfair situation here with, or are you assessing both sides of the road because they're on Evan Street?
Well, at this point, yeah, I mean, yes, that's exactly what we're looking at. The sidewalk comes down on Churchill Street on the west side, by Julie's there. It comes down Berlins Street on both sides. When the Wapakak County Highway Department replaces the bridge right next to Bethany there, the sidewalk will be extended on the north or east side, just to that project limit, and that's where we anticipate extending our sidewalk, starting from there, and then just going the north side of Evan Street. So, yes, I mean, at this point, we're doing just the one side. The main reason of doing just one side, if we do, if we do sidewalk on both sides, we're gonna have too wide of a pavement structure, too wide of a roadway, we're gonna have to buy right away, and then we're talking, you know, really high expense, we probably won't be able to afford that sort of project. So, and then the other, I guess, thing to, to say is that in the ordinance, sidewalk ordinance prefers sidewalk on both sides, but if only one side is to be determined, it recommends either the north or east side if all things are considered equal. That's what the ordinance says.
So, the answer to my question is whoever gets the sidewalk in their front yard gets assessed and the guy across the street doesn't?
At this point, that's the way the ordinance reads, so. We've had some discussion on if we could adjust that or come up with something different. We haven't reached a conclusion or resolution on that, but that's the way it's gonna go.
I, I love the idea of safety for the sidewalk. I just see an unfair situation for the people who live on the, happen to be chosen on the side where the sidewalk is. Yet the people on the opposite side will get the benefit.
Yeah, and we heard that during the public meeting. Kind of the alternative of that is to do the ten-foot side path, the bike lane. Now, the issue with that is that does not have to be cleared in the wintertime by the local residents. So, that is, you know, a trail that could be used, you know, when there's not snow out there. And I foresee, you know, these accommodations, these improvements for the bike and pet, you know, for the school, for the hospital, for the nursing homes that are nearby, having people that are using these areas, you know, have a clear trail. And if it's a, if it's a bike trail, it's either up to us to clear and we're already spread pretty thin for the snow removal, or it's up to the residents and they don't have to. So, that's, right now, we're, we're preferring the sidewalk internally at, at city staff level.
Just one about timing. Is the bridge going out? Is that gonna be done by the county at what point?
Yeah, the bridge is, is gonna be taken out next year. So, yeah, that, that will be most likely a spring, late spring, early summer construction, where that bridge will be out. Berlins Street will be detoured and Evan Street will be part of the detour. We've been working with the county, having an agreement in place that people using County E can use Evans to Churchill, Roylton School, back to State Street as the detour route. So, it's gonna get, Evan Street with its conditions, is gonna get pounded next year, and that's why we're aiming for the nineteen construction. It's gonna be basically two years of construction for those local residents, but when it's all said and done, they'll have hopefully a nice new road to drive on.
I have one question. Wasn't there talk, did I see something posted that they were gonna do work on the bridge there on Highway ten over County E also?
That's a WISDOT project.
They're gonna be shutting County E down for that also?
That's true as well. And WISDOT, talking with them, they said they're, they're shooting for a two thousand twenty, maybe two thousand nineteen construction for that bridge. So, obviously, if that bridge is out, we would like to reconstruct Evans at the same time because then there will be less impact to traffic. The impact would be on the local residents, but like most construction, we would maintain access to our residents. But the people living south of the city will have to find a new way around.
Yeah, it's gonna be a mess down there for the next three years.
Yeah.
So, what, what we're doing here tonight, I believe, is we're not approving sidewalks or, or anything like that. We're just authorizing, Justin, with these two resolutions, to apply for these grants, correct?
That's correct. And the final accommodations of what we're gonna do can still be determined, depending on whichever one we get, we can make adjustments and we, right now, we just wanna lock up this funding so we know how to plan moving forward.
Right, okay. Any more discussion or questions?
Can we, move on both at the same time?
I think they have to be separate.
Okay.
They're two resolutions. So, if there's no more discussion on this, I would be looking for a motion on Resolution number thirteen ninety-six.
I would move to approve Resolution thirteen ninety.
Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Keeland, that council approves number thirteen ninety-six, a resolution authorizing the submission of a Wisconsin Department of Transportation two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Local Road Improvement Program application for Evan Street and reconstruction between Berlins Street and Churchill Street. Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Now, the second part of this is Resolution number thirteen ninety-seven, I'd need a motion.
Also moved.
Second.
Moved by Keeland, second by Olson, that council approves Resolution number thirteen ninety-seven, a resolution authorizing the submission of a Wisconsin Department of Transportation fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-two Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Application for Evan Street Reconstruction Between Berlins Street and Churchill Street. Discussion. Another roll call vote?
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Ten, ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we have another resolution. Resolution number thirteen ninety-nine. This is a resolution vacating a portion of Miller Street and Redfield Street in the city of Wapaka. I think this is just to set a public hearing date of January sixteen, two thousand eighteen at six P M. That's all we're doing here. We're not vacating, we're just setting a public hearing date. Correct? So, I'd need, need a motion to approve that date.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Chestnut, second by Hackett, that we set a public hearing date of January sixteen, two thousand eighteen at six P M. to hold a, to deal with the vacating of Miller Street and Redfield Street in the city. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. And last, we have license report number thirteen ninety-two. These are operators' license or bartenders' license. I think we're handling it the way we usually do, that any obligations to the city have to be taken care of before these people can receive their licenses. Need a motion, please?
Move to approve thirteen ninety-two.
Second.
Moved by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve license report number thirteen ninety-two operators' licenses. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We have no issues of projects. We have no communication or recommendation from the mayor, and I'd need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we adjourn until our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, subject to call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. We are adjourned at seven oh three. Thank you all.